There being no citizens here to render comment, we've satisfied this element of the Next item on the agenda is approval of the February 24 minutes. Do I hear a motion to approve? Do I hear a second?
A second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, abstentions, motion carries. Minutes are approved. Next item on the agenda, comprehensive plan update, final review of vision statement. And I invite to the presentation table the Director of Community Development, Deborah Bent, and the city's senior planner, Lori Anderson.
Oh, it seems very formal.
How would you like it? I'll do it anyway.
So, I think tonight we would like to continue the discussion of the vision statement. Following the joint meeting you had with council where we presented the results and you received some feedback from council. There is a draft vision statement in your packet, so that's probably a good place to start the discussion.
Does anybody care to respond to the staff's draft, recommended draft? Well, as long as you raise your hand and you're first in line. Deborah, you go first.
I got a ton because I looked through all the comments. Well, one simplification that I thought kind of overarching, because each one of them has the words "a community that," or some variation on that theme is, you know, we can just move all of that up to the first paragraph and then get rid of all that extra verbiage and just have, you know, literally say you're simplifying the whole thing. And then that tagline at the beginning, I always end it right because you want it, but the tagline at the beginning could be, "We see Kenmore as a vibrant waterfront community that," you know, and then each one follows and that elevates that whole idea of vibrant waterfront community. And there's also some simplification that could happen in that first paragraph. But in terms of editing, so that, you know, just going down each one, you know, the first one, we've got waterfront, 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 you know, yeah.
Could I make a suggestion that we get feedback on each?
Proposed change.
Each one, okay. Yeah, yeah, okay.
All right, so the first proposed change is to, if I understand it, Deborah, add, "We see Kenmore as a community that..."
A vibrant waterfront community that, yeah.
Or we could do vibrant waterfront community that, and then strike all the references to the community following these requirements. Any objection to that? Objection? Or that?
Okay, so on the first one, so we're obviously taking out vibrant waterfront community. And I mean, this is just grammatical, you know, I mean, I think we could, the last word waterfront could be "it," so we're not repeating the word waterfront, waterfront, waterfront so many times. Do we need to vet each one of these or mostly just?
So, let me make sure I understand. The bullet point, the commentary, "We see Kenmore as a vibrant waterfront community that," and that starts, his, the first part would be, "is connected visually and physically to it?"
To its waterfront.
To its waterfront.
Recognizing it, yeah.
And then, okay, any objection? None?
Yeah, so the second one would just change to, you know, "has" instead of "its own," and that was something that the, you know, comments called out, the comments from respondents. The third one you've crossed out, the next one. Yeah, the comments from respondents to the survey really didn't like the inclusion of that whole, you know, supporting healthy, active lifestyle. It seemed like an overreach according to them, and I actually agreed with that. But I don't know whether my fellow planning commissioners agree with cutting that part. And then it would just read, you know, vibrant waterfront community that provides well-maintained parks, trails, open, you know, so that's how it would read. And I'd like us all, so to say, "and programs" at the end, but I don't know, I mean, that's, we don't really provide programs, so I don't know whether that's, you know, that might not work, so.
Responses to that?
So, yeah, that, I sort of read, I read those comments too, and it seemed like, to the extent there were issues, it was with the word lifestyles, as if the, sort of a Big Brother-ish type of, type of verbiage. So, I actually like that, like the idea of active and healthy, and I just wondered if we might put, "supports an active and healthy citizenry with well-maintained parks." So, lifestyles to me was the, was the word that caught, I thought, the most, or caused the most problems among people who commented. So, that would be my personal thought on that. And instead of facilities, I thought about opportunities, so it was a little broader, and didn't focus on actual, you know, actual things. And it would encompass facilities as well, so. So, those are my two comments on that particular bullet point.
I like those, I have both of those ideas personally.
Okay. Anybody else want to respond to that? Mark's suggestion? No? No objection?
So, let me read that back. "A community that supports an active, healthy citizenry with well-maintained parks, trails, open space, and recreational opportunities," instead of facilities.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yep.
The next one, I can't remember if this was one of the citizen comments or whether I just had a problem with it, but the word actively, it just seems like an extraneous word. We're either protecting it or we're not. So, so that was a problem that I had, so that's one piece. And then, I don't know if we, elsewhere, I didn't really see it. I mean, we kind of say, I added the potential clause balanced with providing access to the waterfront and recreational opportunities, but I think now that we've just talked, we've just said recreational opportunities, maybe we, we don't need to belabor that point. So, I'm gonna just strike what I just said. So, the only edit is just taking out the word actively.
Any objections to that? Matt?
No.
Okay, on the next one, so we would be getting, just to be clear, on this one, we would be getting rid of the word walkable in this one because it is elsewhere in the, it is actually in the second bullet, so it seems redundant here. And it would start with, so, "vibrant waterfront community that," we could either say "has a safe, reliable, effective system," or "provides," one is more passive and one is more active. So, I don't, you know, I mean, to me, it's kind of like, well, what's the role of the city? So, I think provides, I think the city does do that. I mean, we're, we're very, the city is very active in doing these things, but, yeah.
I was just gonna comment, you are losing one thought here. If you take walkable out of this particular clause, and that is sort of a walkable community as a whole, the second bullet point does refer to walkable, but it speaks only to the downtown. And I don't know if you want to, if that makes a difference, but I just wanted to point that out.
Yeah, well, I mean, it talks about sidewalks, but you're right, it doesn't, it doesn't elevate the word walkable.
So, Deb, you want to stick with your original?
I, yeah, because I'm not sure how realistic the city as a whole being walkable is, having walked most of the city for various political things. There's incredible hills, no sidewalks, no chance in the immediate or distant future for sidewalks in most of it. I don't know. I mean, the downtown is sort of restricted, I mean, it's somewhere in between. Basically, you want walkable to important places. They may be slightly outside of the downtown, so I don't know, I have mixed feelings about that, so.
Any other comments, response? Mike?
I would support striking walkable. I think the rest of the language there suggests that you would have, to extend, it is realistic, walkable, but doesn't put you in a position where you're gonna end up contradicting yourself in the future.
Okay. Any objections? Striking walkable and putting in provides?
So, "that provides a safe, reliable, and effective system of streets, et cetera."
Right.
Okay.
So, the next one, and I don't think this respondent said this, I, I kind of was uncomfortable with it, that the word cares for, because I don't, I don't know that our, our city, I guess I was thinking of this as the, what is the city doing? I mean, the city is, some ideas advocating for the health, safety, and welfare, they're ensuring services are available for the health, safety, and welfare, I mean, they're, so I guess I was struggling with the word cares for.
And did you replace it?
Well, with something like that, but I'm open to suggestions. Those were the first couple that came out of my brain, but.
What about supports? That it cares for? Objections, comment, response?
I wouldn't object, but I will comment that this just seems so vague to me. I mean, I think that every bullet in there would encompass this one in some fashion.
You mean vice versa?
Or vice versa. So, I mean, I would, actually was thinking of just deleting the whole thing because I think you read that everywhere.
Yeah, I might add that this is the bullet point that would refer to police and fire services. So, you could take it out, but it's not implicit in the other. I mean, I suppose it is, but usually that is, it has its own.
Then perhaps we should just say that explicitly.
So, it's service, it's like emergency service and, well, we, I mean, we talked about this in a previous meeting recently, that, you know, we do expect the city to be at the table, I think was the language that we, we talked about, sort of to, you know, ensure that things are there. So, there is a role.
Any other comment? Carol? Is there a mind reader?
I like the idea of just striking the word cares for because the city is not a person, you know, but we are an entity, and to say we support the health, safety, and welfare of all of its citizens actually does include those services we talked about before, fire, emergency, you know, and we're working on, you know, connecting its citizenry and encouraging citizens to care for each other. That's a personal thing, but we can support that as a city. And actually, that is something that I think is an element of what has transpired over the last, since we've become a city, is learning how to do that as a community because we were pretty fractured before, and we're not anymore.
You know, Mike, I see where you're coming from, this is so broad that it's almost too broad. On the other hand, if we were to have a really short vision statement, that would probably be one of the first things to put in there because it's broad enough to cover a lot of ground. I guess my sense is, leave it in mostly because it covers public safety in a broad way, but we don't have to talk about too many specifics. And as I've said before, my bias is to try and make it short so it's more readable, more likely to be read. So, I'm kind of leaning toward, let's stick with what we got there. It's certainly true of everything in there, it's all a part of, everything in there is a part of general welfare. But it, because it says health and safety, it does focus a little more light on public safety.
Yeah, I'm fine with that. I mean, I don't have a strong feeling either in or out, I don't think we lose anything either way.
I agree with you. Yeah, Mark?
So, I just want to, to reflect that, I wonder if we could change the order, safety, health, and welfare, if we are primarily talking about, like, say, public safety, fire, police-type services. And also, safety seemed to be the highest value that people were looking for in the small-town feeling, so.
That's good.
That'd be my suggestion.
So, could we go over that one? So, did you replace cares or not?
Yeah.
Supports?
Supports.
Supports. Supports the safety, health, and welfare of all of its citizens? Is that, okay.
The next one, I, I'm sure that there was a reason to, that we put local, we added the word local, but do you, do we really want to just say that? So, if a business came in that was a, you know, had a few different outlets, would we not support that? I guess I wasn't sure what the rationale was there, but.
Okay. Any thoughts? Mark?
I'm still thinking.
So, I'm inclined to leave it in, and I'll tell you why. You know, one of the audiences, and we have to think about our audience here, it's gonna be people who live here and like what they see. It's gonna be people who might want to live here or operate here. And if we say local businesses, I think it encourages people to locate that business here, and to think that the city is emphasizing the importance of their, their operation.
Right.
And I don't think it presumes there's not other branches, that we wouldn't support a business located here with branches elsewhere. I think the word local makes it more attractive to the extent businesses are looking to read this.
I'm fine with it, I just hadn't, I mean, I wasn't, didn't know the rationale, so, yeah.
Any other comments on this one? Mike?
Comment, again, I don't feel tremendously strong about this, but I would, had trouble with the phrase "provides for the needs of its citizens." What exactly does that mean? I don't think we could develop an economic base that would provide for all the needs of our citizens. We don't, are not big enough to do that, I'm not sure how big you have to be to get there. At what point do you then, what guidance do we give people on making trade-offs? What is more essential to the needs of citizenry than, I just don't really understand that phrase in there. I think the, this bullet sounds and reads better without it.
So, would you have a?
I, yeah, go ahead.
"A prosperous community with an economic base that provides quality employment opportunities, encourages, and supports local businesses."
So, and just to clarify, I guess I was assuming that we would cut the part that says "a prosperous and vibrant community" and just start with, you know, "has," since we've already got vibrant waterfront community, that would be the tagline, but.
Yeah, actually, I crossed that off.
Oh, okay.
But I looked at it myself, I didn't know you had that.
Yeah, I mean, I can, I can tell you what I recall from the, "provides for the needs of its citizens," and I can't remember when that went in, but our first mayor always used to say, and I, I lived here as a kid, so I remember this too, that we used to have a store in Kenmore called Wigwam. I don't know if any of you go back far enough for that. And you could buy, you know, it was like a miniature Fred Meyer, it was an everything store. And Jack said, you know, "We need somewhere in Kenmore that you can buy your socks and underwear." And, you know, and, you know, I mean, I've kind of remembered that because it, it has felt salient since then, that, you know, we still don't have a place, we really don't have retail and commercial in, in Kenmore that meets the needs of the citizens. So, I guess I do see that as kind of a goal, but, I mean, so that's, that was kind of the origin, I think, of that statement, but that's probably not very clear. So, it's certainly not going to provide all the needs.
Yeah. So, you're really talking there more about a range of services or opportunities then?
Yeah. So, in other words, not all, I mean, I love Kenmore camera, but it's a niche kind of place, you know, I mean, as opposed to Safeway that is, you know, something that everybody can use, you know what I mean? So, there's, I think there was a desire to have places that fill kind of your general day-to-day retail, commercial needs. We used to have no lumber here in Kenmore, no longer, you know, I mean, so those basic things, people are using their tax, tax dollar, you know, their, their sales tax dollars are leaving the city. We don't, we don't keep those tax dollars here, so.
I think it's a good point, and we talked about it as part of the RV reason, that we have a narrow economic base, we have a narrow range of goods and services, people have to drive to LFP and Bothell and Woodinville to buy a lot of things that we wish they could buy here. So, I think for that reason alone, it's worth keeping it in, and I think what Jack Crawford once said, probably not perfectly elegant, but that point is something we've all wanted for a long time, I've heard that from a lot of people, what Deb has just said.
Did Jack learn overcoat or?
Did what?
Did everything else here? Did you know, Jack?
Yes. Oh, yes.
Actually, that's a pretty clever way to put that.
No, I just, just a warning, I mean, I like what Debbie just said about, I think she said "a range of services," I wonder if we could put in, instead of "provides for the needs of its," provides a range of goods and services?
Yeah.
Because I think that kind of captures what we're trying, trying to capture.
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine with either one, I think it's, you know, we're trying to capture that, the spirit of that, so, I mean, I, yeah, wordsmithing is fine.
Maybe this is a sign that it definitely needs to be wordsmithed, because when I read that, what I thought is that building an economic base could be two things. One is building the density so there are enough people to support such an economy in Kenmore, and then, secondly, maybe attracting the businesses here to provide all of those services. And I think where the city does do this is advocating to keep the post office, right? I mean, it could go technically, and we'd have to go somewhere else to do that, so that's, I think, a value add for our city to have that convenience, right, in our downtown. So, I think it's a valuable statement to keep, but I think that the way that we're interpreting economic base sounds different, so maybe we need to clarify that some more.
Yeah, I like Debbie's suggestion, I mean, I would go with, you know, something like what Debbie suggested.
What, I'm not sure what Debbie did, did you put to Mark?
Pretty much the same.
Where are we at?
I don't want to, shouldn't quote Debbie, but, without her, her permission.
No, go for it.
You said "a range of services."
A range of, a range of services, or a range of goods and services, or?
But the economic base is still in there, Mark. Right?
Right. Well, that's, okay.
With an economic base, provides for a range of goods and services.
A prosperous community with an economic base that provides a range of goods and services, quality employment opportunities, and encourages and supports local businesses, so.
Angela's point is, economic base is ambiguous. I'm okay with it because even if it's ambiguous, both, both elements of the economic factor are helpful.
Yeah.
So, I mean, density is great, attracting business, that's good. If you read it either way, it's helpful.
I, I go back to the first change you made, and Deborah talked some about this, but "we see Kenmore as a vibrant waterfront community that," colon.
Has. Has an economic.
Has an economic base, so you're okay removing the word prosperous?
Yeah.
Okay.
I think it's implicit.
Yeah. Okay, so it would read "has an economic base that provides a range of goods and services, provides quality employment opportunities, and encourages and supports local businesses."
Yeah. You could take, you could take out the second "provides."
"Has an economic base that provides a range of goods and services," right, "quality employment opportunities."
Right.
Maybe it has to be "a range of goods and services and quality employment opportunities"
There you go.
"and encourages and supports local businesses."
Well, are we losing some parallels in there, Mr. Attic?
What's our latest, Mike, can you re-read it?
Okay. "A vibrant waterfront community that has an economic base that provides a range of goods and services, comma, quality employment opportunities, comma, and encourages and supports local businesses." So, we need something before quality.
Right.
And we, if you want to take out the word "provides," we need another word in there.
Well, you can just put "and," and you have a comma, and that sets off that phrase, and then you could say "and encourages and support," there's a lot of "ands" in there, I agree.
Well, the parallelism means we gotta have the same verb structure for each clause, starting each clause. So, "provides," I think it's worth leaving in.
How about, how about we take out "encourages and," so then you'd have "provides a range of goods and services, comma, quality employment opportunities, comma, and support for local businesses," something like that? That's not really exactly the same meaning. Sorry.
Provide, provides, and strike encourages and, that the last clause reads "and supports local businesses."
Why, Doug, do you not want to use "encourages?"
Because it's sort of implicit in "supports." Like, we can put six words in there, one.
Can somebody read it back?
"Has an economic base that provides a range of goods and services, provides quality employment opportunities, and supports local businesses."
Good.
Mm-hmm. One, two, did I see? Yeah, okay.
There's two "provides," but that's okay, it's.
Well, we could, we could change "provides," as long as we have the parallelism.
Or you could say "provides a range of goods and services and quality employment opportunities and supports local businesses." I mean, either, I don't know.
Trying to lose the parallel.
Yeah.
I think the second "provides" is probably fine.
Okay. Deb?
Oh, yeah, back on, so the next one, let's see, so that would be "vibrant waterfront community that has clear design standards," and this is my question, just for clarification, I think that the design standards are only in the downtown, is that not true?
That's not true.
That is not true, okay.
Oh, that's where the design standards started, but over time, we've expanded where they're incorporated, you know, specifically along SR 522 and some of the other regional business zones.
All right. That was my question, and it is, that's great. And the only, then that makes me wonder, as a owner of a residential property, that this does not apply, and I think I am correct on this, this doesn't apply to residences, right?
That's true.
Except for in the downtown core, in which it does with large developments. So, there is a little, that's why I was trying to say, how do we put a box around where these design standards actually go?
Single family.
They don't apply to single family.
Why?
Right, so how do you articulate that so someone knows what we're talking about? Because it, you know, kind of sounds like, well, you're in a, you know, some of those neighborhood organizations, they have design standards, so that's, you know, people kind of think about that.
I don't know if you would really need to be so specific, because, I mean, these things could change over time, as we've seen, you know, it could expand, contract, change. I think the goal then is to have, you know, great buildings. So, I mean, I, I'm fine leaving it as is, I don't think you need to be so specific, but.
Anybody else? Mark?
Yeah, I just have a question about, is it only design standards that influence, you know, attractive, functional, enduring buildings and places? Aren't there other, you know, land use policies that certainly affect places? So, I just wondered about why it's design standards and not some more, maybe, general reference to standards or policies or, we're just curious about.
Right, that's pre-existing language, I imagine it probably was put in place specifically for the design standards. Since they, at least years ago, when this was probably first written, that was not as common as it is today.
But if they don't apply to the single-family neighborhoods, then we're, I mean, it seems a little confusing to me that we have these standards and we're talking about the whole community, but yet the design standards only apply to, you know, a smaller part of the community, so, it seems inconsistent to me, that's.
But then, if you look at the next one, it does talk about single-family residents.
It does, in a different, yeah, different, different context.
So, I think they're trying to hit both bases so that it's inclusive.
What if it was design and development standards?
I was just gonna say that.
Do you like that better?
Well, for clarity's sake, I do. I don't want it to be.
Because that implies developments as opposed to single fam, I, I think that makes, I think that makes sense, but, yeah.
When I read this, the week this I-
When I read this, the week this I heard it, with design standards, but for them to be, for design standards to be meaningful, they have to be consistent with a purpose. And I think the purpose we have here is, we want to advantage, we want to promote the strategic, the city's strategic plan, developmental plan, or maybe that's the way we limit it to the commercial and keep it out of the single family. Wordsmithing. Diversity of housing types, oh, no, 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 no. A community clear of design standards, creating attractive, functional, and enduring, maybe public buildings and, and places consistent with the city's strategic economic development plan. What do we have out there?
I think it should be broader than just public buildings. I think what really...
I'll really take that out. I mean, the key is, I think, is have it consistent with a purpose. And I think we've established a purpose in a number of strategic plans we put out there. Why don't we cite those? Because that's where the design standards are associated with.
I, I would not actually put in, for example, the economic development plan, because I think the purposes of the design standards go well beyond that. I think it has to do with walkability and being pedestrian-friendly, and those may be attractive in an economic development context, but, but it's not quite the same focus. So...
About consistent with the city's future vision.
Well, this is the vision, though. Creating attractive function.
Yeah, I mean, the purpose, purposes, to be attractive, functional, and enduring. I mean, those are ends, ends in and of themselves to some extent. And are we, I mean, just out of curiosity, are we doing that? Like a Spencer 68, meeting those guideline, you know, are we still, we're still going down that road? Okay.
It's in the code. It applies in a number of zones.
Excellent.
And so if buildings come in, they have to meet the design standards.
Anybody else on this? I like it the way it is, and I respect where other points are coming from. I see where Mike's coming from and Mark's coming from. But it's going to get pretty long if we try to make clear the subtle distinctions between which building's here and that. We've already got neighborhoods. I think if anybody reads this, they think, oh, good, it's a single-family neighborhood. They're encouraged, protected, but I don't think they're going to feel like they have to be more and more...
Could we consider the, adding the and development, the, the language that Laurie suggested, design and development sta, I mean, that, design and development standards is kind of a, it's kind of a thing. And I think that might give, I don't know, I mean, that's, we don't have to...
No, it's a fair point. It's nothing wrong with it. I just think it's implicit in that. That's the...
I guess I was thinking, yeah, yeah.
You're not going to cover every base. Don't try to cover every base. Nobody's going to read every base. I think those who read it are going to feel good about there being some respect for how this, the buildings look. Are they going, you know, does that mean we're reading more the building code or development standards? Of course not. But we're trying to give more appeal, physical and visual appeal, to commercial buildings.
I agree. And I think it's fair to assume that development will flow from design.
Right.
And we're, you're comfortable with, I mean, it reads to you that it doesn't necessarily apply to the residential.
Oh.
Okay.
But, you know, on the other hand, Deborah, we just got done with the RB zone, so we got, we had a lot of time and effort put into the design standards. So my reflexive reaction is, oh, I know exactly.
Oh, I see.
Because I'm not sure the layperson is.
Yeah, okay.
But really, anybody who reads that and has any familiarity with design standards is probably going to have some background in it.
Right. Yeah.
I just was going to say that design is implicit, that there's some, it's attached to something new or a development. And, you know, usually, we don't think of our single-family homes as coming under the scrutiny of a city design plan because it's private property. So I think that the fact that the very next vision statement is about residential areas, we can just leave it alone.
Okay. Yeah.
I defer to the will of the commission. I do think, I still think that there should be something about development. It's still, to me, is a little, has a little lack of clarity, but I defer to the majority.
Okay, well, let's take a little poll here. If anyone wants to vote, raise your hand. One, two, three. You're a...
Leave in democracy.
But I think it's a, it's a fair point. All right, Deb, you still...
I do have a question, if you don't mind, Doug. Not suggesting that it be struck, but I am curious about the word functional. Was there a concern that we would be building non-functional buildings or places? Does anyone know what functional is meaning in this sentence?
That they're just not simply pretty for pretty's sake, that they're, you know, that they're, that they're functional, as well as attractive and enduring.
So would a statue or a fountain be functional?
I, I mean, I would, an example that would fit would be kind of the city hall. It has met the design standards, it has attractive features, it incorporates art, but it also functions to serve the purposes, you know, as, as an office and administration building and a community gathering space.
Yeah. We were talking about a water feature being developed and some heated rocks being, being developed in the new Village Green. I'm not sure those are particularly functional. They will be attractive.
I think another way to look at functional is, is to look at access, pedestrian access, and being, you know, providing amenities and places for the public to function in a walkable community. I, I would read it that way and think that the design standards that address public walkways and benches and those kinds of things are also part of the functionality of a downtown area.
Okay. Makes sense.
All right, you good?
On, on the next one, I would suggest, but I could be argued out of this, the word protects instead of supports. But I, I could go either way, so.
Here's my reaction.
Yeah.
We had a crime problem in the schools. Is it a, you know, so you've got protects there. It implies that you've got a safeguard beyond the norm.
I see.
Yeah, medical, medical, metal detectors at your entryways at the school. Protects, it makes, I think it conveys a sense of concern that it's not there.
Okay. Well, and it also, as I was saying, it, it kind of implies a staticness about the residential, you know, like, they're good now, let's just keep them in this time warp that they'll never change, we're going to protect them. So I think, I, I'm just going to argue myself out of that right now.
What if we changed it to retain?
Retain?
Well, that's sort of the same, yeah, sort of the same, but...
There's supports, but what's your argument for retain?
Retaining is like you're trying to hold on to it. Supports is, I don't know.
As opposed to support?
Seems like it could just change and you could be standing there thinking like, I don't know.
Anybody for retain? No? Okay. Carol, do you have another comment?
Well, I think support does cover what the goal of owning personal property is, and then it becomes part of the market value of the land. Because all you have to do is go down into Seattle in any neighborhood, and they are mowing down houses like crazy. Why? Because it's going to become denser, because it has to, to continue to progress. I doubt that Kenmore will get to that point, where all of these neighborhoods a mile away from 522 are now high-rise condos. So retaining or protecting implies that, as a city, we don't want progress ever, you know? But I don't think the need will arise. I think we have plenty of opportunity down here for 100 years. Seattle doesn't, though. You know, they're very constrained in having people live downtown. It's a different situation.
Okay. I was actually on the wrong bullet. I was looking at schools.
Yeah, I was wondering about that, too.
We were talking about single-family residential neighborhoods.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
I just wondered, does anybody else wonder about the use of the word character and what it, what it defines? And it, it, I mean, I think we all have this vision of what a single-family, certainly our own residential neighborhoods are like, but that's, it's sort of implying there's a single character. I, I just wonder if anybody else questions whether we even need that word and whether we could just say supports the single-family residential neighborhoods. I'm just going to throw that out there.
Keep thinking there.
Just, just an idea, you know, we do have mobile homes right here. It's a neighborhood. It has its own character. Are we supporting that character versus another kind of character that is probably different? And I think we had that discussion last time, that we want to be inclusive, and so, again, what, what does that mean?
Well, I, on the comments, just looking at the comments from the survey, I mean, you probably saw, there's a ton of comments about kind of in, in, I don't know what you call it, in development, infill, infill, where there's, you know, relatively high-density big homes, small lots going into existing established neighborhoods. Lot of concern about that over and over. I, I tend to think this, this statement is trying to address that somehow, even though we're allowing it. I don't know how we're addressing it. I mean, I had a, we had a personal experience of what character of a residential neighborhood is. We actually had, I mean, all of, in my area, we have neighborhood covenants. We have a covenant. And it was challenged by a new owner of a property. And it was all about, I mean, the legal stuff was all about what is defining the character of that neighborhood. And so, you know, each, and, but they differ. I mean, it isn't, it isn't uniform over the whole city. Their neighborhoods have characters, like you were saying, so I, you know, I, all this is to say, I'm not exactly sure, but I, in the comments, they were talking a lot about infill, so maybe that's what we need to address. I don't know.
But we also need to remember what slice of that survey was represented.
True.
So, I mean, we have to take that into consideration when we're talking about these vision statements. I think the encouragement by the council to keep the statements more general and leave the specifics up to them as they amend or upgrade the codes is really a good standard to go by. But it doesn't mean we can't strike a word and change the intent of a vision statement. I just don't know if it's necessary in this one.
Anything else? So I think the proposal is, do we strike the word character? Is that mine?
Well, that was, you know, that was my thought, just because of the, sort of the, Deborah sort of alluded to that, the, the challenge in defining a, a character and, and the potentially pejorative meanings that it might have in some cases and not being inclusive in other cases. And if we say the supports at single-family residential neighborhoods, that's a much broader statement, and, so that was mine, that was my thought.
Okay. Any more discussion or take a little poll?
Well, I'd be in, in support of keeping it. I think I agree with Deborah that every neighborhood has its own character. If we did look at the mobile home park, for example, maybe we would say like, well, the character or what, what we want to preserve there is affordable housing, so if something were to change, we'd want to make sure that that was still available somewhere in the Whereas just supporting single-family residential neighborhoods seems too broad in this sense.
Okay. Can I just do the poll? Unless there's one more, any more discussion. All in favor of striking character, raise your hand.
Thank you for the consideration.
Character on that one. All right, Deb?
Okay, so here's a controversial idea. I would actually strike the next one, and I know you guys created it, so I'm, I'm swimming upstream here. But I think we addressed the higher-density housing in the second bullet. So that's the one end of the range. We talk about retaining the, well, not retaining, supporting single-family residential, so that's kind of the other end. I'm not sure what we're trying to get at here, and it was also the lowest percent agreement in the survey. So it's the, kind of the low-hanging fruit.
No, I don't think that's the right metaphor, but I...
If we want to cut something, it's the, yeah.
Got it. Okay. Then it is the right metaphor. Angela?
If I remember correctly, I think this is speaking about different types of housing to meet the needs of all socioeconomic classes, so we might include microhousing in here, I guess, mobile homes, I guess, all condos, I mean, all different types. Oh, also, what is it? Guest, not, guesthouses?
Accessory dwelling unit.
Accessory dwellings, yeah.
Okay. Mother-in-law unit, yeah.
Anybody else? Mark?
Yeah, that was my recollection, too, of our, our discussion. You know, we talked about single-family, but we also wanted to certainly give some, you know, some, some notation of, of the other housing types. I read the second bullet, just to kind of bounce around, that, that applied only to downtown. So that was my reading of the second bullet. So there, you know, supporting diversity of housing types elsewhere in the, in the city, I think, was what we were...
Okay. I totally withdraw my suggestion. I'm, I'm easily argued out. Let's see. Nothing on the next one. It seemed like on the one after that, the one that it would, it would read, vibrant waterfront community that honors its history and supports the arts. Those seemed like really kind of different concepts, and honors its history seemed to maybe fit better with the sense of belonging and pride in the next one, but maybe that was, it, it doesn't fit really well anywhere, but it didn't really seem to fit with art, I don't know, to me. So, I don't know. But again, I could be argued out of that, so.
I actually agree. I thought that, that same thing, it was a non-sequitur, in a sense. And I like what you said, dear Deborah, about putting it in the more, the next bullet.
Well, should we, should we first, first talk about getting it out of the, the, I mean, but then, of course, it's just reading supports the arts, I mean, which is short, but...
It's what you can just say, but I agree. It's not, I don't know if it rises to the level of a vision statement bullet.
Yeah.
But a lot of things in a vision statement that we would like to support, but, you know, one of the things I think about the vision statement is it should, every city's going to have most of this stuff in their vision statement. So I think we want ours to describe Kenmore to the, particularly to the extent it's different. We want some, we want to describe what's different, distinguishes us from some other cities. I mean, we want to do all the good things that most of these points say, and I'm not saying to take them out, but I think we should put more emphasis on things like waterfront that distinguish us from other cities.
Could we...
And the arts, then, becomes one of those things that anybody could say and nobody would challenge, but does it rise to the level of being the 10 or 15 things that we want to emphasize most? I would say...
Well, we do, we actually do, for a small city, we actually do support the arts. I mean, we have our, you know, the arts, I don't know, it's the group. We've got, you know, art in the city hall, we've got out our side, we do the music thing in the summer. I think it is, for, for, at the size of our city, I think we, we do a fairly good job. I mean, one thing I was thinking is, we were talking about this, now I'm going to go back to history being in that one, is, you know, maybe a statement that's something more like a community that supports, you know, the arts and culture and history of the community or something like that, you know, just make it more broad or something? I don't know. Art, culture, and history seem, even though I just said they don't fit together...
Now they fit together.
They fit together? I don't know. If you make it, I think, I think the problem I was having is honors its history doesn't seem to fit with supports the arts. So, I don't know.
All right, Carol. I think the next line...
Well, as we, as we've gone through this process, obviously, some of it has taken place before I got here, but in a previous draft, the supporting the arts was a separate bullet point. And so I think there's been some desire to make our vision statement more concise and, and cover as many things as we can in a broad nature, but not losing what the original intent of those bullets were. So, you know, Kenmore isn't, you know, on the map like... So, you know, Kenmore isn't, you know, on the map like Madison Park for some of, or, I don't know, I can't think of an art community that is all about the arts, maybe Wallingford or Fremont, you know, something like that, but we do have a history of arts here, I mean, there are some actually very famous people that lived out here over the decades, and it is a very creative environment, because we are removed from the city in some ways, so, maybe honoring our, I, I don't like the idea of combining history with art, because I live with a history guy, so he would not like that, but, I'm gonna, I'm gonna make an appeal to have, to rework that a little bit, you know, the culture of our community is going to have a future, too, so that's really what these vision statements are about, what is going to be the defining identity of our community in the future concerning our history, our culture that we're creating now, and the arts that could or maybe aren't or will be here? That's what these vision statements are supposed to give some guarding or definition to the identity of our community.
Okay, I'll go Mark, and then Mike.
So, I liked Deborah's first suggestion to, I, I agree that they should be split, because I think they're very different, different concepts, and, and I also think arts should have its own, its own bullet point, so I, I agree with the idea of having, support the arts as a bullet point there, maybe it could be wordsmith, but then honoring the history move down into the next, the next bullet point, I'm not exactly sure which clause it should be inserted in, but that's...
We've got an idea.
Okay, Mark?
Yeah, I agree, Mark, that honoring its history could move into the next bullet, I think it would fit better there, I don't think history and arts belong well together in the same bullet. Doug, I agree that supporting the arts feels like a bit of a throwaway statement, in that every community would say so, but if we do feel that it's important as a group, I think it fits better within the previous bullet, that we support and encourage quality education and the arts. I felt those two go better together than history and arts.
Okay, anybody else?
I'd like, I guess I'd like to see it as its own bullet, then, I mean, because schools and arts are also pretty different animals, and they would be supported in different ways, I mean, if, if any of you have not gone to one of the annual art shows, I mean, they draw from the whole region, and they're huge, so, I mean, we, we really, you know, we do a pretty good job with art.
All right, so, let's, I think we have a majority on removing history. I think there's some divide on whether arts is a standalone bullet point or goes elsewhere, so let's start with standalone bullet point. All in favor of arts as a standalone bullet point? Put your hand. We got two, four.
You know, I almost need to qualify my vote towards yes. If you can, for those in favor of making arts its own bullet point, I'd like to hear some suggestions on how it could be meaningful, because just to say supporting the arts does not feel meaningful to me. If you could articulate on how it's meaningful for our community, I could see it as a standalone thing that represents our vision, but just to say that we support the arts does not seem to represent our vision.
Okay, anybody want to respond?
It's almost like we're supporting, I'm just going to blather here, local, local arts, I mean, because it's not like we're a philanthropy that's giving money to the Seattle Symphony, I mean, we're, we're fostering, I don't know, local art opportunities, I mean, that's wrong wording, but, I mean, it, we have the art show, we have the art around town, we have the music stuff in town, where, so if somebody can help out with the verbiage...
What about looking at the results of that, an enrichment of the culture, the, the benefits that, that a culturally active or, or an art-supporting community brings, like, why do we care, I guess, is, we don't just have paintings because we have paintings, right?
Right.
Why do we care? Articulate that, and then I think you have a meaningful vision statement.
I'm the wrong person for that.
Rich cultural environment, or, I'm just throwing out a phrase, but, but I, I think that's...
Well, I can think of two things, one, we would like to enhance the, we talk about the livability of the city, we'd like to enhance the quality of life of the citizens of Kenmore, and we also want to attract visitors to the city, so I think that's two things that promoting the arts would give us.
Kate? Go ahead, Angela.
My, my worry about moving history to the next one is that next one becomes really large and starts to cover a lot of different things, like volunteerism is very different than honoring history. I prefer coupling arts, history, and culture, I think currently, I mean, this doesn't have to be the vision for 2035 necessarily, but currently, I think, I feel like the city does that kind of on an equal footing, you know, we do support the Kenmore Arts Association in their art shows and in putting on their art show, but, and then we also support the boat races to recognize our history, like, I think the city supports all those efforts, but one doesn't, in, just from my perspective, excuse me, one doesn't seem to rise to the top for me, like, it seems like we, we support them equally.
I'm wondering if we could do something like, supports, just hear me out, supports local culture, including the arts, and, so that we say something about culture, and then what does culture include? The arts, the history, something like that.
Supports a rich local culture.
Including the arts and, supports a rich culture, including the arts and local history, and...
Do we want to ask staff to come back with some language? I don't know, I mean, we're kind of stuck.
Can do that.
Okay.
I mean, that's up to, that's just an idea, I mean...
No, I don't see any objection to it, we are kind of stuck.
Okay, so, but that would be, I mean, that would mean keeping the history in the...
Right, so, I think we need to start with, does the bulk of the commission want this cultural, art, history thing altogether, or do you prefer having the two different bullets, and just having one about arts, and then either moving history into the next bullet point, or breaking the next bullet point into two points? The next one could read, "an inclusive and family-friendly community with a small-town feeling that honors its history," period, "a community that fosters a sense of belonging and pride and encourages volunteerism and public involvement."
So, okay, let's, let's take that out, you were saying break, do we break? Do we have, what was that?
The question is whether the bullet point that has history and arts in it should remain together and then somehow be expanded to address culture, cultural things overall.
Okay, so that's question one.
First question.
Okay, so...
One more time, I'm sorry, could you rephrase the question?
Right, okay, so we're talking about the bullet point that talks about honoring history and supporting the arts, and we've previously talked about breaking them apart, and there was force in support of that, a new idea has come forth, which is that we should leave history, arts together, but, but move the focus to, to cultural, to, sort of, the cultural life of the city, which could incorporate historical things and arts and music, I mean, it could incorporate a lot of different things.
And it would make room for things in the future that become developed, I mean, we used to have, like, the good old days, pioneer idea, you know, what we used to do here as a city as a social event, we don't really do that anymore, do we? So, I think encompassing some kind of a statement that makes provision for this part of our identity, even though we probably all go other places to get that, except for maybe running up to the concerts in the summer, or, you know, whatever, where we go to consume art or participate in art probably isn't here, but...
But it could be.
This is, right.
That's what the vision statement, I think, does, is it gives you a way to build on that idea, you know, we are a culturally rich community, and that is hard, because we're competing with Seattle, you know, and we're just little Kenmore, but do we want that, that idea, those ideas, to be part of our future, and what the council does with them and the details isn't up to us, we just have to fashion the statement so it leaves room for those activities, or to include that as part of our potential.
So, the question is, do we keep arts, history together and modify that to be a broader statement?
About a culturally rich community.
Right, arts, culture, history is one broad statement in some form.
Correct.
So, let's take that out, all in favor of that, raise your hand, narrow majority, okay? And then the next one would be, well, we'll just leave the second bullet for another.
Yeah.
You know, we're reading this, I, I keep thinking what Angela said was like a real pithy sensible phrase, but I was sort of mangling it, but if we, if we, just to throw it out as a proposition, a community that supports local culture, arts, and history, we want local in there, we want to blend those, culture's broader, because it includes art and history, so we'd start with culture, although, for some reason, arts, culture, and history has a better kinetic appeal.
Yeah, it does, actually.
It just rolls off...
It's alphabetical, too. It's alphabetical, too.
You call it what?
Alphabetical.
Oh, that's it.
Yes, it's A, B, C.
Anyway, I'm throwing that out there, if there's other votes in favor, arts, culture, and history, and want praise, take that off.
And putting the word, you said "local."
I did say "local," I think that's important.
Actually, I really like that.
Yep.
Supports local, arts, culture, and history.
Yeah.
We have one, two, three, four, five.
Oh, boy!
You got worked on.
Thank you.
Wow, I got six.
That's good.
We got that one, and then, so we're on to the next bullet, is the proposition, right?
So, the next one, we wouldn't be putting history in there, but it just, it reads a little funny, so, a vibrant, it would now read, "a vibrant waterfront community that is inclusive and family-friendly," you'd want to take out the word "community," and, but, I mean, did anybody else have a problem with the small-town feeling? I, I, do we need it? Do we really need it?
What do you should mention on that?
I think we, yeah.
I would say that we need it.
Really?
I think that was, 81% of respondents liked that phrase when they thought about what a small-town feeling means, so...
You're right.
I, I, I think that was a very specific question that was asked in the survey to determine whether respondents liked that phrase or not, and I would say that a lot of people liked it.
So, just so you know, Deborah, the response we're having is that we talk a lot about it.
Oh, we did? Okay.
We joined the commission back in December, and I was one of those who wanted to say, you know, we're really not a small town anymore, and it's a little bit bleak, it was the first bullet point in the old vision statement.
Whoa.
Oh, okay.
So, yes.
Boy, I don't think that's what we're going to be in 20 years, I think that's what we are now, we're part of a network of economic, an economic network.
We're corridor of cities.
Right, a broad regional community and economy, but, and Deborah knows this, I mean, Debbie knows this from the early days, people respond very strongly to that phrase, "small-town feeling," and the survey reflects that, so, this is one of those things where you give people what they want.
Well, the actual statement, it says, "based on your response to the previous question, should Kenmore in 2035 have a small-town feeling?" That's what they responded to, not whether that verbiage should be in the statement, but, just, so, just making that point of clarification.
I don't see that as a question.
Well, they aspire...
Have a small-town feeling, and you're saying that doesn't mean, that means we may not put it in?
Well, but what they, in the previous question, what they said that meant was not those words, they said it was a, I mean, if you look at the responses, it was a place where you know your neighbors and others in the community and have a sense of belonging, which we already have in there, and a place that feels safe and friendly, which, again, we already talk about safety, so, yeah...
They're not going to be tautological, and say, "a small-town feeling means a small-town feeling," they're going to give it something broader, so it doesn't mean they disagree with that phrase, but...
Plus, I think you, you do accentuate what a small-town feeling means by adding things like encouraging volunteerism and public involvement.
Okay, I withdraw, but we do need to wordsmith this, so it dramatically makes...
It's too many things to be simplified.
To me, I would say, a small-town feeling is those things.
It is.
So, I think that's the point you're making, Deborah.
That is the point I'm making, yeah.
And that's how I would phrase it, because we're not a small town, that's somewhat misleading, it might even discourage people from locating businesses here, but what people really mean, I think, is, you know your neighbors, others in the community, and have a sense of belonging, I would put that in instead of "small-town feeling," but I think you're going to get a big blowback from the council, because that phrase...
I think that is correct.
...emotionally powerful.
Oh, okay.
I think that is correct.
How about if we leave, how about if we leave the small-town feeling in there, and, you know, we're going to review this vision statement code in seven years, and the evidence of the small-town disappearing will be there a little stronger, but, but the other pieces are very important, they, they do describe what the vision for our community is, especially if you think about the other things that we have in the vision statement, it basically is, we know our neighbors, we participate together out here in this community, and we have a great sense of, you know, camaraderie and volunteerism to get things done, I mean, that, those are all things that would attract, I think, certain kinds of businesses or companies to come here, and people.
So, I think what we need is, because this is a lot to bite off, this phrase is three lines long, there's a lot of different stuff in here, so, I think the most efficient thing is to, let's think a minute, and if you have an alternative, alternative language, then let's vote on that. Angela?
Well, I'd like to propose maybe moving encourages volunteerism and public involvement to the next bullet point. The next bullet point actually covers several things that I think the city is legally responsible for doing, which is seeking out input and integrating public input, right? And I know they also encourage volunteerism with the city and other organizations and public involvement, you know, with the city, it seems to me that that makes more sense in the next line.
Yeah, I like it, in fact, I would replace it, because as you said, we're already legally obligated to collect input and integrate that into policy, but the volunteerism and public involvement as a, as a character of the city says more than that, more than what we're legally responsible to do, I think it's a more meaningful statement, anyway. So, I would say, I like what you're saying, Angela, and I would say, let's make that the next bullet, a city that encourages volunteerism and public involvement, and then we're just left with the first couple clauses. On family-friendly, small-town feeling, sensible on the side.
I like that. Do you, are you going to keep open, responsive government in there? I'm not quite clear on how the next bullet flows, but are we, we're just dealing with one.
As I said, my bias is toward gravity, they overlap a great deal, we're already legally obligated to inform the citizenry and have responsive and open government, and any Republican, I would strike it.
So, what would be left? Can we read what would be left in the third to the last one there? Can somebody read that one?
"A vibrant waterfront community that is inclusive and family-friendly with a small-town feeling and that fosters a sense of belonging and pride."
That is perfect.
Any objections? We're good.
So, then what's the next one?
And then the next bullet point would be, "a vibrant waterfront community that encourages volunteerism and public involvement."
That's what I was proposing. Objection? No? Okay, good, win-win. All right, Deborah, last one.
That's it? That's all, I mean, the, well, yeah, a good partner, but it's a pretty benign comment, yeah.
Any, anybody else have commented on the last bullet? No? Any, Mark?
Well, I just wondered if, well, I was going to see if that, we could combine that in some other one, and maybe that's another thing that's... that in some other one, and maybe that's another thing that's sort of implicit in, you know, what governments should do.
I do think, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
You, we could incorporate it into the one that we just created, which was "encourages volunteerism and public involvement and works as a good partner with citizens and governments throughout the region."
Yeah.
Fine with me.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Any objections?
Yeah. Thanks, Angela.
Can we review those last two, just so we know what, what, where we're moving where?
Okay, so, the next to the last one was the one that read "waterfront community that is inclusive and family-friendly with a small-town, uh, with a small-town feeling and that fosters a sense of belonging and pride." The next one would be "A community that encourages volunteerism and public involvement and works with citizens and governments throughout the region." We need to maybe add a qualifier in there to get to the point of being a good partner.
Works as a good partner, I think is what people said.
Works as a good partner.
Yeah, right.
Okay, works as a good partner.
Yeah.
Okay.
All right.
Good work.
Anybody else? Any other comments?
Just generically? No, go ahead, you were.
So, we had also been asked about ranking these and the, the order in which they appear represent the importance of the bullet.
Uh, the way that I reordered them was to respond to some degree to the ranking. For example, I'll give you a couple of exceptions, because the other, uh, comment that the council made was to try to group-like concepts. So, for example, the, the highest-ranked statement had to do with "A community that supports and encourages education and quality schools." I did not think that belonged at the top of the city's vision statement, so I moved it down. On the other hand, uh, the, the second bullet about, um, identifiable, walkable downtown was probably in the middle of the pack, but I felt that that, in combination with the waterfront, uh, um, comment, which was like the fifth-ranked item, uh, made for a good introduction to sort of what Kenmore is and what Kenmore sees for the city itself. When you start with the third bullet and then move down, all those are in ranked order until you get to the schools one, which again, was ranked highly. And then the last few, the inclusive, family-friendly, the, uh, one that's now combined about working as a good partner and volunteerism, those were ranked slightly higher, but I felt that those grouped well together. So, that's the way I did it. You have my insights on how to do the ranking. The way I technically did it was to go through and I looked at how many agrees and strongly agrees there were for each bullet point, and then I refined that by looking at the difference, if things were close, between strongly agree and agree. Uh, so that's how I did the ranking.
Okay. Uh, any comments on this? Any proposals to change it? Do you think about taking the third bullet point, including number two? I remember when we were working on the parks plan and we were working on the RVs, rezone, how we sort of had this epiphany, you know, and I know Mike Vanderline really emphasized this, too. They really go hand-in-hand. You know, a big part of our identity is our recreational resources, and it's probably our best asset for attracting new business and growth. And you get, we get a very strong response to any changes to the parks, and Deborah's very active with parks management and, and development. So, because as I said, we want to try and distinguish ourselves as much as we can with this vision statement, I'd be inclined to put it right after the waterfront. And they go together, too, obviously, parks and recreation and waterfront. Anybody else? Okay, disagree?
I, I kind of keep it the way it is. I actually thought you did, I mean, I had independently kind of done what you did, and it was like, wow, okay, that's, I mean, it was almost identical, um, which was amazing. But I, I would kind of keep it there. I mean, over so many years, people have said, "We want to, we want a downtown." Um, I was actually struck by how relatively lower it was on the survey. I don't know what to make of that because there's such a hue and cry for that.
Yeah, I, I would say, this was one that I, uh, mentioned in front of the city council because the thing that resulted in that having a lower ranking really was that last clause about higher-density housing.
Oh, right.
There were many comments, uh, that "Take that out, I don't like that." Uh, and Mark, in fact, at the last meeting, asked if I could cross-reference how many people lived in single-family versus their response to that. Everyone who lived in single, everybody who responded that way lived in single-family.
Oh, really?
So.
Everyone?
Who mentioned high-density housing in their comments, who also lived in single-family.
Ah, okay.
Yeah. I, I. I think that grouping them in a manner that casts a vision for what we are hoping to create in Kenmore makes more sense than making it accurate to a survey that 200-plus people took. That's just my opinion.
So, Mark, did you want to jump in?
Well, yeah, I, I, you know, the priority, I've been thinking about that, too, the priorities. Um, you know, you hear from a couple council members who at least raised the, you know, raised the question of whether they would be either implicitly or explicitly read as priorities. So, that, I, I sort of come back to that and I, you know, I like what Doug just said about, uh, having bullet three higher up. I also thought that part about, uh, the one about a walkable community with safe, reliable, effective, it seemed like that's kind of an overarching yearning to amongst, you know, that kind of was, was throughout the survey and elsewhere, the whole transportation, um, aspect. Um, so quite honestly, I, I, I'm, I'm still struggling with that. I, I don't know about the priorities and how they're going to be read.
Well, I agree with the council, they'll be read implicitly as being in order of importance. In fact, even if they're not, people are going to quit reading at some point. Start reading. After the first three or four.
Right.
So, that'll, those will be the ones that make the strongest impression anyway.
If you.
So, we could, we could do a poll. I'm sorry, Deborah.
I was just going to say, if you, if you were trying to group things, another way you could look at, consider maybe grouping was to look at, um, this whole idea of the connect, making connections or, uh, whether it's with the waterfront, whether it's the downtown or with the transit system, it seems to be kind of making linkages and tying things all together, so you come up with something cohesive. So, when I was looking at that, I was going, if I was going to put things together, I would kind of link the, the waterfront, um, the transportation system and the downtown because together, I think those three things, if you successfully know three things, I think those are the key things that will lead to the vision. But that's just my personal opinion.
I see it as, which is a good opinion. I, I see it as, our biggest asset is the waterfront and very closely related to that are the parks. And we get very strong responses from people when we take up these issues. Like I said, and I think the commission, we all have kind of agreed on this, St. Ed's, the waterfront, Bert Gilman, probably the things that distinguish these areas are most distinct assets. So, I would put those up front as a group. If they were up to me, it would be vibrant waterfront, one, well-maintained parks, two, system of streets, transit routes, sideways, sidewalks, bike trip, bikeways, trails, three, environmental protection, four, and they're all sort of related. And then you get to downtown, business and density, affordable housing and that kind of thing. It's a different, is the next group of related and important points, but that's.
I, I get that in terms of grouping. I, I, I think, I, I think it was Carol that said that, I mean, this is also aspirational, so that's, that's where I'm struggling. It's like, I really want there to be a downtown that is, you know, at all of those things and, oh, I don't know.
If you, if you said to any city, "What distinguishes you?", all right, and you come to us and say, "Well, what distinguishes you?", well, we want a downtown. I don't think that's going to distinguish us, but what we've got is Washington. That's, that makes us one of the few cities in this area that has that feature.
Right, but I mean, I guess I wouldn't say either of our neighbors have a particularly, I'd, walkable downtown. I mean, LFP has the mall. I, I don't know, I don't know. I guess I, I'm struggling with the aspirational aspect, but I, you know, I can go either way.
But we're not, we're not necessarily trying to be aspirational for everybody else out there. We're, we're trying to create a vision statement that defines us, it gives us an identity. It, um, allows a developer from the East Coast who might dump millions of dollars here to check us out and, or, or it can be, you know, visiting professors at Bastille University who want to come and teach for five years, looking at the assets of our city. I mean, it's could be a lot of different things. And I really do think that we did a good job overall of touching on so many different points. How we organize them is kind of minimal compared to having things in there. I mean, yes, we'd like to have the number-one thing of our city be at the top, but that's going to be different things to different people and different purposes, but being able to group them in some kind of an organized way helps. But then you have to go back to, well, how are you prioritizing them? How are you thinking about them? You know, and, and we're just taking what has been built over time and we're saying, okay, we're stopping to look at this vision statement. We're going to put it all down on paper and submit it to the state just to prove that we've got this all going, but the, it's a working document, too, for our council. So, it's also kind of giving them the heads-up on what's important. However, like I said before, as a planning commission, we get to help to cast a vision for the next 20 years. We did some due diligence and got a survey back, but it didn't, like, encompass the whole citizenry of Kenmore. We can, we can figure it out.
Do you want to propose something?
No.
I'm going to propose, okay.
Yeah, you propose and I'll, I'll.
Then we'll vote.
Yeah.
Knock it down that way. Although, Mark?
I just wanted to add on that. I, I really think I hit a key point on what's important, and I think it's important in how the audience perceives it, and I, I do think there's some need to, to have some priority, even if it's just, you know, a few bullet points at the top that we, you know, more or less agree are the, the highest priorities.
Okay.
I just think that's how people are going to read this document and how it's going to be perceived and, and then, and, and then they can be grouped, you know. However, you know, the majority sees fit, but that's my, that's my opinion.
So, I'm going to make a proposal, and if it fails, I'm going to ignore my second, and if it succeeds, I'm going to make a second proposal. That's all right. So, the first proposal is moving bullet point three, supports active, healthy life, or active, healthy, effective, healthy citizenry with no well-maintained parks, et cetera, to the second bullet point. All in favor, raise your hand. One, two, three, four. Four, five, okay. And the second one is move, number, what is currently number two, down below, uh, provides safe, reliable, effective system of streets. So, what we have are recreational or linked, uh, trails as a theme for the first four points, and then we get into downtown and economic base and, uh, design standards and housing types as a sort of second group of thematic points. So, the proposal is move the second bullet point, sense of place, identifiable, walkable downtown, to number five, below, um, system of streets and transit routes. All in favor, raise your hand.
You mean number six.
Yeah, I know. Sorry to keep track.
Two, three, four, five, six.
What, what comes after, uh, streets and you've got one, two, struck number three, so three is, three is.
Is three number two now?
Right.
Three became.
Two became, three became two.
I think if you just leave it at, move that one down below, regional and local destinations and the effective system of streets, I know where that is.
Right.
Isn't that what your motion was?
Would be below, system of streets and above health, safety and welfare.
Correct.
So, that's what I proposed, move downtown to that point. Are we on, on the same page, everyone? Okay. In favor, raise your hand. One, two, three, four, five, okay. Um, so where does that leave us? Is it kind of tempted to tinker a little more to get that second group with downtown and housing and density and businesses, economic base? Let me start with that. Do you want to make it like a second tier of, of grouped, grouped bullets that reflects those points? Yeah, Mike?
Yes, I would say yes. I think, I like where you're going. I think it's, there, this is a chance for the city to really take a first step at what is it really our vision? And we've had this discussion over and over and over again, and we have many different people who have many different priorities.
Exactly.
And I think to the extent that we can say, the important thing about our vision that makes Kenmore different are these four or five things, and really, it has to do with the waterfront, it has to do with the environment, it has to do with our parks, those are the things that we have to offer. Then, I would be so bold as to say, can those people who want to come here to enjoy those things have the opportunity to do that? And those people will attract the economic base that will come with it, and that will determine what that economic base is. There will be businesses, just as there will be individuals, will choose to come here because of these things. And we're saying, that's what we want to build. That's our vision.
Okay. So, let's start with that. You want to make it, the next set of bullet points, like the second, so after the first five, focused on downtown, economy and one of the other things.
Design standard.
Housing and design standards. All in favor, raise your hand. Five, six, seven, eight, seven, eight.
So, in terms of making a second tier, you're not really changing the order, but you want the top ones to be bolded or somehow distinguished?
Just, just moved up the list.
The first four or five things have to do with.
Right, yeah.
Waterfront, the parks.
I've, I've got those, one through, um.
So, I see.
Four, and then.
And then like the next, I think there's four or five of them that have to do with downtown and business and the economic base and housing and design standards. I think they all sort of belong together. Now, I could get into a proposed order if you give me a few minutes. Want to try that?
I think you can almost achieve that, Doug, by taking the one that says.
Yeah.
"A community that cares for the health, safety and welfare of its citizens."
Yeah.
And move that in front of the one that says, "A community that supports and encourages education."
Yep.
That by definition moves all of the business and housing-related ones.
That's correct.
Oh, yeah.
Yep.
That'll work.
And it kind of, it kind of gives us, you know, our, our actual reality assets, our natural assets are at the top, the function of our city's kind of in the middle group, and the heart and soul of the people that live here are defined in the, the remaining bullet points. So.
You're so smart.
We are.
Yeah, that works, that works, yeah.
And that's what we were after to begin with, right?
Okay. Okay, so do we, Lori, does that make sense?
Yep, okay.
All right. Anybody else? We don't need, we don't need to read it, but if we.
It'll come back.
It'll come back.
It'll come back to you.
Right.
Trust. Okay, great.
All right. Thank you, everyone. That satisfies that item on the agenda. The next item is comprehensive plan update, healthy slash active living and sustainability follow-up information.
Correct. So, this memo, basically, uh, when we talked about healthy living and sustainability, you had asked several questions about, are there existing policies that address this or this or this? And, and so what I did was to go through, uh, the plan, either things that we've recently done with the utilities element or, uh, the housing element or ones that were adopted last year, and tried to pull out the policies that responded to the questions or the concerns, and that's what this memo does. After looking at all of the goals and policies, uh, the staff recommendation is that we don't need to add anything else into that healthy living sustainability discussion because I think most of the concepts that folks were concerned about are addressed through other policies in the plan. So that was my conclusion. And one in particular I called out, there was a question about equitable access to amenities. There was some discussion about adding in something about equitable access to amenities. And I felt, after looking sort of at the framework of the plan, that this was not something that staff would recommend, because in fact, the city does distinguish in some cases on where amenities should be provided. For example, in the transportation element, there are certain priorities for where sidewalks should go, or bikeways, and so we're not really providing equitable access to amenities. So I thought that created a conflict. So, those were my comments.
Okay, any response? Any objection?
I don't have, I don't have an objection. I just, where does that leave the recommendations that were made with the January 27 memo?
So those, the goals and policies that you all approved then would move forward.
Oh, okay. So this doesn't supersede that?
No, 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 no. This was to augment that information in case you wanted to add additional policy language. And again, staff is not recommending that you do that, but certainly the ones that you already endorsed would move ahead as part of the plan.
All right.
Thank you.
Seems like we have agreement. Thank you.
Okay.
Well done. So the next item on the agenda is Top Plan Update Demographics and Economics Chapter.
Right. So I don't even know what to say about this. There's not a lot of room for discussion. The information is basically factual. If you have questions, this is a chapter that is toward the beginning of the comprehensive plan, and I tried to update it with census information or information from the Puget Sound Regional Council. In some cases, the information isn't presented in quite the same way that it was in the first version of the comprehensive plan, because the, the information isn't done that way anymore. For example, the census doesn't ask all of the questions that it did in 2000. Now the census has a very limited number of questions, and the American Community Survey, which is a revolving three or five-year analysis based on, on a sampling, is what provides some of the data on some of these topics. So it's not exactly the same resource as was in the 2000 plan, but I think the information is the best that is available on some of these topics. So.
Any comments? Uh, Mark?
Well, I just had, I don't know if this is right, just a few sort of interpretive questions. Is this the time to do that about the data, or should that be another?
We've got time.
We've got time.
Yeah, go ahead.
Okay. Let's see, my bullets here. On page, I guess it's page two here. It's, if I read this correctly, single family has grown more on an absolute and also percentage basis than multifamily in the past 10 years under the, the, yeah, I guess it's page, page two there.
Mark, help me out.
Yeah, it says 2010 U.S. Census and then 2014 OFM.
What's the page on the footer?
Oh.
Three dash two?
Three dash, three dash two, right. And it's the first, the top there was this characteristic, and it says 2010 U.S. Census, 24 OFM. So it just says, it suggests single family has grown more than multifamily. And I'm just wondering if, you know, where that's occurred and, you know, any future projections, is that, it seems like that's sort of counter to what we're certainly have been, have been planning for, looking ahead.
Right. I don't think, I think it's a 1% difference. I think the difference is miniscule. And certainly, I think the, where those numbers come from are for the large number of Platts that have been developed in the city over the last several years. I, in terms of multifamily projects, we have not had very many multifamily. Now Spencer 68 is certainly going to make a difference when the numbers come out for 2015, but these OFM numbers are April 1 numbers, they're based on building permits, so I would anticipate that those were, again, development of single family Platts.
Right. Okay. Then down there, the second graph, talks about the median age of, I think it says 39. I'm just wondering, is that, how does that compare to other?
I don't know.
I'm just curious.
Yeah.
It gets to, you know, how our population is, is aging or, or not, or?
Would, I'm happy to get similar information for Kirkland and Bothell and Lake Forest Park, if that would be useful.
I would find that interesting. I don't know about, you know, Mike, I don't want you to go on a wild goose chase, but some of the, you know, data here is pretty important about, you know, what Kenmore is now and where it might be heading. So that's why I want to ask these sort of interpretive questions.
If, if the commission wants me to get that, I'm happy to. I can track that down.
It's a little close to the national average, 39, I've seen it creep up from the mid 30s to the upper 30s. I bet it's within a couple percent.
Yeah, I don't know.
I'm not sure if it would make a difference in our policy. No, if we're that close to the national.
If we were, you know, high, if we were way higher, that was what I was asking. Are we, are we kind of in the?
In the ballpark.
The general ballpark. And if we are in the ballpark, then you don't need to do any research.
I would, I would say we, we are within a couple of percentage points.
Slightly above average.
I guess we're a trace older than the average. The way you look. The company excluded. We look good.
All that healthy, active living.
Yeah?
Yeah, on dash three, page 3.5, it talks about, about half of the employment looks to be in services. And again, I was just trying to get an idea, is that, how does that compare to other probably comparable?
Right, again, I don't, I don't know that off the top of my head. It's information that, again, because it came from the.
Sure, you got, you just got the numbers basically, right?
Right, so, Table D E D.
Yes, D E.
Right, right. So the PSRC covered employment estimates would have that information by jurisdiction. So again, if you want me to get it for surrounding communities, I certainly can get it. It's not a, a difficult task.
I would be curious in that.
Can I just clarify, Mark? First clarify and then I'll go to Angela.
Oh, yeah, just clarify the, the, how are percentages, it's about, what, 50% or close to that in services and how that compares to other?
Right, again, I think the question is, is that something that you feel is important for the policy discussion? If the answer is yes, then, or just generally, you want to know?
Just for general information, for other potential. That was mine, yeah.
Angela?
Well, in response to your question, I do think that that might help if, if service, the service industry was defined, like what types of jobs does that bring to our city? And related to that, I'm curious about the information about the top private employers, because now we only have three listed here instead of more, so what are the other ones that are, that are adding up to the top five? Do you, do you know?
Right, so let me answer the first question first. Services is a defined term, and if you would find it helpful for me to add a footnote or a bullet point or something about what services are, I could add that to the table. Is it the commission's wish to have me get this information on surrounding jurisdictions? If you think that would be useful, I'm happy to do it.
I'm indifferent, but others? We got Mark, we got anybody else?
If it's just.
Mark?
I'll do it on, I'll.
You're on your own.
That's fine.
And then, was there another follow-up? Of surrounding jurisdictions, but that's mooted by the.
Right. Maybe what I can do for Mark and others is I can send you the link. How about that?
Sure.
That will take me one minute, and I'll send you to the link, the link to these OFM estimates, and then you can, okay.
Oh, okay. The next thing was Angela's question about largest employers.
So the employers. Let me tell you about the employers. But let me finish this note here first, so I don't forget. So, believe it or not, the information on our largest employers, we do not have it. And so, the information, I talked to the Assistant City Manager, and the best information she could provide were for, was for our top three. So I'm not saying there aren't two more that are at the top, but I don't know what they are, and I don't have the data to determine that.
There is a chart in here that has five.
No, I, I know, but that's pre-existing.
Well, why don't we use it?
As of 2014. It's on, it's on. No, I know that, on page 3.6, but American Bowling and Plywood Supply are off of that list, because I do not know that they are the fourth and the fifth.
I see.
Largest employers any longer.
Can we just call them?
Well, I, yeah, I could certainly call them to get the numbers, but how, how do I compare and contrast that with the other businesses?
I see.
I mean, I would have to, I'm going to have to call a lot of businesses to rank Number Four and Number Five. So at that point, the question was, do we really need to know the top five, or is the top three adequate? Because we have the information for the top three.
Do you know those are the top?
We know those are the top three.
How do we know that if we don't have the information on the others?
Our Economic Development Expert, Assistant City Manager, says those are our top three.
Oh.
At the risk of just throwing this entirely into the wind, those are the main, I'm sure they are, the three largest Kenmore-based employers. Interesting to know. But are they the folks that employ the most Kenmore citizens?
We've got no way of knowing.
Oh, that's a different question.
No way, that's a different question.
Exactly. So when we think about why, what's the information that we need to have for the decisions or thoughts that we might want to look at, what's the important piece of information? If, if Amazon grows by 20%, does that have as big an impact on us as a 20% growth in the number of bowling alleys in the city of Kenmore? So I, you know, I think we have to think about this a little more broadly, and we can get really focused on what's happening within commerce-based firms within Kenmore, but is it really telling us what we really want to know or what we need to know?
I, I think the point of including this was just so the community in general had a sense of who the largest employers were. It certainly doesn't address who's employing our residents, and we know that 97% of our residents work outside of Kenmore. It, it's frustrating that we do not have better information on this topic, so that I should be able to pull out a list and know exactly how many.
That's my real point. I mean, you need to fill out the information you need to have to put into the draft comprehensive plan. But to think that we're going to take the information that's in the draft comprehensive plan and use that in any way to inform policymaking, or what direction or strategic planning, no, it's, it's not really very useful information.
Well, I think a salient, I mean, your, your point is, you know, what's the salient piece of information? I mean, we hardly have any employers for the amount of population that we have. I suppose Lake Forest Park is even in worse shape. But I, I would guess if you compare us to other cities of our size, we wouldn't look so good in terms of our, our ability to employ anybody, whether there are Kenmore residents or anybody else within our city. So I don't know, I, so what I'm struggling with is what is remaining here is just a list of the employers, but not the numbers that are associated with that, and that, that does seem salient to me, but I don't know.
So what you're suggesting is that if we leave the top three in, that we at least call and get updated numbers?
Yeah, or maybe an overall number, like how many people are employed in the city or something, just, just as a frame of reference to show how far behind we are. I mean, I have a sense that we're behind.
And, and that number is actually.
Oh, is it in there?
On the previous page, in 3.5, 3,600.
Ah, never mind.
Okay. And it's, what do you do with that information? I mean.
We don't know yet.
We don't know. Okay.
But it does seem material. And in fact, all this came up, I think, from the Burke and Associates report that we received as part of the RB zone.
Well, this information came from a different source, but certainly the question of how many people, how many jobs there are here versus how many people live here, that was definitely discussed in that context.
And Debra's really on point about thinking that there aren't that many people employed for the size of the city. You're exactly right. I think Burke told that. I think it told us. We have a very low percentage of local residents, or, or people employed in the city for the percentage, for the number we have. That's true. And that should inform policy. How do we attract employers?
Right, right.
I think there, there's an interesting discussion there, and we did have this, and earlier on in particular, we looked at the, the earlier study. There's one way, that's one question you could ask, is should the city be generating more jobs? Then again, there's the other side of that to say is, the people who come, who live in Kenmore today, who come to Kenmore are employed. And they're coming to Kenmore to buy the home that their employment elsewhere affords. We're not going to be able to generate the jobs the way Seattle does or anywhere else does. However, we could make our city attractive to those people who want to live here. So when I think about our priorities, where do we put our priorities and our resources? Do we put it in getting another Safeway or a bigger Safeway? Do we get another bowling alley? Do we try and think we can attract away from Seattle or somewhere else the level of businesses that we see developing down there? Or do we look at how do we make our city more attractive for those other people who are already employed and, and attract them here to the city? And there's a growth potential here. I'm repeating earlier comments we've talked about before. There are different types of economic development, different types of economic engines, and given our asset, it's probably not attracting a new factory, a new huge retail box store. It's going to be attracting people who want to live here, who have an income level to support an economy that's going to create some jobs for people, probably not necessarily people who live here, but make this an attractive place to come, to have a home and raise a family.
All right. Any more questions for staff regarding the demographics chapter? Okay.
So I, I hate to bring this up again, but my little table, D E E, which has the top private employers, do you want me to retain that table and just show the three top private employers? All it does is, is let us know who our primary employers are. That's a useful piece of information.
I would like to know the numbers, and that shouldn't be hard to get.
Right.
It says three, yeah.
Okay, so I will add the numbers. Okay?
And it shows Bastille's like far ahead of everybody else. So that's an important thing to know, the importance of Bastille's as an employer. Something must have happened to the bowling alley, if they went from 170 to off the chart.
I, again, I'm not saying that they are not one of the top five, I'm just saying I don't know that.
Yeah, but they're not as high as Safeway, according to Nancy Housley, right?
Correct.
And at last count, Safeway had 100, so they lost at least 70. They probably lost at least 70 people.
I will say that almost all of, there was a, a large loss of jobs in Kenmore with the Great Recession. So that may have impacted some of these businesses more than others.
Right, interesting. Okay, anything else?
Just curious on Bastille University, I think I saw a note on one of the pages, might have been a footnote, that that included part-time as well as full-time.
Correct.
Do you know if that includes student employment as well, part of their?
It didn't include students. That's only staff and faculty.
Staff and faculty, okay.
All right. Anything else? All right. Satisfied that element of the agenda. Looks like we satisfied the entire agendas. At the last meeting, we had asked Commissioner Mulcair to attend, he had volunteered to attend already, the State of the City Address. Carol had looked into going. Did you manage to make it?
I did.
Great. Can you give us a report on what you heard and?
Ladies first, please.
You're so kind. I really want to thank Debbie for passing the word along so that I could go, because I wasn't registered, but I was able to go. And it was very encouraging to be in that room, because it was the chamber for all of North Shore, Bothell, the Bothell chapter of it. And there's, it was really surprising how many people I knew in that room, so that was fun. But I think the content of the message was, we are moving forward as a city. And there were a number of bullet points that he talked about, but probably the most exciting is the opportunity that may come through the Lake Point Development, for me. That was, you know, that, that's something that I think we all really want to. That was, you know, that, that's something that I think we all really want to know what it is. You know, what's, what are the steps that are going to take? It's not going to happen overnight, that kind of thing. But then, just going on to talk about, uh, the work that our city council has done, our staff, and just giving us a presence among the other cities along the lake is pretty amazing. Especially when you look at how big the drawing card is in Bothell, or Woodenville. You know, maybe not Lake Forest Park, but certainly Kirkland. You know, you look at these other bigger cities, and I really have to commend our city manager for being able to represent us and help to move these projects forward, so that we do have, we're very warmly received. I felt like it was a very positive meeting, and he had a really good presentation that was easily communicated to the business leaders of our community.
Mike?
Yeah, that's a great summary. I think Rob represented himself and the city and the staff extremely well. He had a very on-point and on-topic message. He had five to seven priorities that, you know, he talked on. And, and the one that really got the most attention in the most of his time was the Village Square Development Project. He made, I think, what was a pretty big announcement, that the development group that's building the Spencer 68 apartment buildings here will also be responsible for the commercial, residential, fitness, village, city, public space facilities that are going to be here. He showed, obviously, very attractive 3D models of the, of the space, and, you know, was a great cheerleader for the development, and made it seem very real, you know? And for those of us that have lived here since the city's been incorporated, it was great to see that, and to see that kind of enthusiasm about something that's kind of gone beyond the, the whiteboard, and is, is starting to happen. And, and I think he hit just the right notes with, you know, regard to public safety and sidewalk development. He talked about the grants that have been approved for, for new sidewalk development plans. And, you know, he talked about public safety as, as really the first, as he talked about all of the priorities, he said that the first priority for, for himself and his staff is, is the self-safety of, of the residents. And so, he, he really put that above everything else, and those sidewalk things were, were very meaningful. And I think that sat well with everybody. Some kind of key people in attendance that day, in addition to the business leaders, were Councilman Smith, and Mayor Baker, and Superintendent Francois was there as well. Debbie was there, and a few other key notables. I'm going through the VIP list, Debbie, so I can get out.
Thank you.
So, yeah, otherwise, it was just a really enjoyable time to, to get, to get together. And the president of the Heritage, Kenmore Heritage Club was there as well, and it was nice, it was nice.
Was Mike, I mean, was Rob the only presenter?
No, you know, it, he was and he wasn't. There was the, the, I don't know if he's the president of the Chamber of Commerce for Bothell, but he is also the dean of Cascadia College.
He's a great guy.
A great presenter, a great speaker. And they also had sort of what you would call a presenting sponsor, which was the president of the Spencer 68 Development Group, Main Street Properties, who was also a very compelling guy, and he kind of, you know, put Kenmore first in his presentation. Kind of tied his development company and the interests of Kenmore together quite well. You know, made the partnership feel quite real, I felt, which is exactly what you would hope he would do in that kind of a forum. They introduced a Student of the Month from Inglemore High School, which was kind of nice. And, but Rob obviously had, had the majority of the, of the time.
And what details did they give, if any, on the potential development of Lake Point?
No, go ahead.
Not very much. He, he, he really put that out as aspirational. But again, along the lines that we've been talking about with the vision statement, that that is the crown jewel of Kenmore. And he said that, you know, he, he is one of the people that has high ambitions for that project, but there wasn't much detail.
There wasn't much detail, but in light of the other things he presented, it really does, um, put a feather in the reputation of the city, that when you think about where this city was 10 years ago, we are positioning ourselves, let's say, to be able to play at that level, should that opportunity arise. So, and that, that's what was great about this development, the, the Village Square, because it demonstrates that we know how to work as a city, but we also can attract, you know, partners that can actually make something like that happen. It was good.
All right.
I thought a nice dramatic effect, too, was that he showed, kind of through the same camera lens, photographs of Kenmore, what would we call this, Kenmore Village?
Yeah.
Kenmore Village, probably at the turn of the century. So, picture muddy wagons being drugged by mule teams. To 1950s, where you've got the drive-in theater, and, you know, banners on parade floats going by, to, to really, what would we say, five years from now, six years from now, to, you know, the, the 3D model of what it could become. And it, it's pretty remarkable, if you look at it, kind of from that perspective of, I guess the perspective would be from 68th Avenue, just across the street, looking towards City Hall, what this can look like, and where it, it will be coming from.
All right. Thanks to both of you. Very good report. You guys on staff deserve a lot of credit. I'm sure Rob didn't do it by himself.
That presentation, they're working right now on, kind of syncing the PowerPoint presentation. It was also video, so there's some technical stuff going on. But it will be then available on the, on the website for everybody to, to see. And I, I must say that Rob did kind of hit pretty hard to the parks and the waterfront, and the city's plans for developing that. And I think one of the neat things he ended on was, there was a picture of a little girl with a huge smile on her face. And he said, "That's the face I, I would love to see sort of on all the citizens of Kenmore. It's sort of a fun place to be, that element of surprise and fun and delight." So, it's sort of, and, you know, there's a lot of facts and figures, but it was that sort of intangible thing that he was also trying to get at, which I thought was an interesting point to make.
Well done, Rob. Yeah, all right. All right. I think that concludes the agenda and our, and our report. Is there any new business? No new business. I then hereby adjourn this meeting.
Oh, and we are, we are meeting on the 31st, it looks like. We have a quorum? Okay.
There's, there's a quorum.
Okay.